Welcome to the regular meeting of Morgantown City Council, April the 7th, 2025. Normally, we have public comments before our regular scheduled meeting. Renee, has anyone signed up for public comments? Okay, not having any public comments. We will proceed with the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask Councilman Chris Jernigan to lead us in the pledge to the flag. If you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call Reverend Andrew Wajner. Is he in the audience? I didn't see him. If not, I'll ask Jasper Hempel. He'll come forward and lead us in an invocation, please, Jasper.
Let us pray. Father God, I thank you for allowing us to come together this night as we come here to do the business and the upbuilding of your kingdom. We ask that you lead us and guide us in all that we say and all that we do, that it be done to the glory of your holy name. We just bless those that protect and serve from one extreme to the other. And so, as you continue to be the wind beneath their wings and raise them up on every leaning side, bless this meeting and as they are governed according to you, under your rule and your super rule. And so, Father God, we just thank you for this night, this day, and this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Jasper. Next, I'd like to introduce City Council to my far right, Wendy Cato, Mayor Pro Tem, Chris Jernigan, City Council, Keith Rigsby, City Attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor, Sally Sandy, City Manager, Butch McSwain, City Council, and Chris Halkin, City Council. Renee Carswell, I was clerk to the board, and Annette Stillman Bridges and Ernest Williams are interpreting for the deaf. We have a sad retirement, in my opinion, tonight. We have honored retiring city employee Jason Wisniewicz. Historically, we have honored those retirees. And Sally, would you like to say anything before I read the resolution?
I would agree. It's a sad retirement. You all know I don't really like retirements. But we certainly are happy to send Jason to the next chapter of his life and so appreciative of what he's done in our community.
I'd like to read that resolution. Whereas Jason Wisniewicz joined the City of Morgantown as a part-time Public Safety Officer Reserve in the Public Safety Department on February 11, 1997, and continued to build his career through transfers and various ranks cultivating in the promotion to Director of Public Safety on August 29, 2022. And whereas Jason Wisniewicz has consistently strived to grow as a police officer, attaining additional educational opportunities and certifications while proving himself to be a leader in every rank throughout his career, sharing his knowledge and expertise, always with the intent of improving the department while serving the citizens. And whereas Jason Wisniewicz always exemplified his devotion in doing what is right, commitment to building community relationships. And whereas Jason Wisniewicz faithfully served the City of Morgantown and the Public Safety Department with integrity and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of the City of Morgantown for over 31 years. And whereas Jason Wisniewicz retired from the City of Morgantown as Chief and Director of Public Safety Department on April 1, 2025. And whereas the Morgantown City Council, which is to officially recognize the contribution of Jason Wisniewicz and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be resolved by the City of Morgantown that the mayor present this resolution to Jason Wisniewicz, adopted the 7th day of April, 2025. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Manager. I need a motion, please, to accept this resolution.
Resolution honoring retiree Jason Wisniewicz.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
I need a second motion, please.
I'll enter a motion to declare weapon Glock Model 45 Serial Number CALY993 and Bullard Serial Number LFH391OE Fire Services Helmet as surplus, sold for $1, and presented to retired Chief Jason Wisniewicz.
I have a motion to have a second. Second. I'll ask Chris Jernigan, if he will hold in favor of the motion. Say aye. Okay, motion passes.
And I am paying the dollar.
Ask Chris Jernigan. Jason, if you'll come forward, please.
My friend, it's a great honor to be the one to present you with this resolution. You've been around a long time. You and I have worked together for a little bit, and I appreciate all the many things that you've done. And the resolution says it all, the way you've gone through the ranks and led each and every step of the way until you finally became our chief and led all of these men and women through the public safety, both fire and police, gallantly. And we appreciate all of the hard work and dedication that that took. We appreciate all that you've done for so long. At your retirement celebration recently, there were lots of comments made about your early days and some of the things and trials that you had to go through to get here. And it was really amazing to listen to how hard you worked and how dedicated you've been to do this. The thing I think that I want to point out most is that you're not retiring just to go off and play golf or relax or not even going off to try to make more money somewhere else. But you're going off to serve our citizens in a new role with your mental health degree that you gained while you were doing this. From my business in the mental health world, that's very important, and I really appreciate that more than you know. So, on behalf of the council and all the citizens of Morgantown, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, City Council, for this resolution. I want to thank Sally and each member of City Council. You guys have been truly supportive of our role and our mission at public safety. We could not do this without your support. We could not provide the level of service that we do without your support and continued support. The department heads here and all city employees, they truly have the citizens' best interest at heart. They go out there and work hard every day to serve. And this is a servant's role, that you do have to have a servant's heart. And so, everybody that goes out there and does the work of the city, they do so because they want to, and they do so because they serve. And I'm glad to have been a part of that and will continue to keep you all in my prayers. And I'm thankful for my family as well. We have my dad and uncle here as well. So, me, my dad, and uncle, that's 106 years of combined service to the city. And if we go back even further to 1944, my great uncle Red Wisniewicz, having been chief in 1956, that would put 81 consecutive year-over-year service that a Wisniewicz has served the City of Morgantown. So, 80-plus years. And that comes to an end today, and it's not April Fool's joke either. Thank you all, and I appreciate every one of you, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. We also have three other people we would like to recognize with service pins. They're not available to be here tonight. Wallace Chambers, 20 years at the Maintenance Worker at Recreation. Teresa Powell, 25 years as a Customer Service Specialist in Finance. And Shane Roper, 25 years as a Compost Operator in Water Resources. We have their service pins, and we will give those to them. Next on our agenda, under public advocacy, we have some recognition. The Burke County Chamber of Commerce Women's Leadership Trailblazer Award. I'll call on Mayor Pro Tem Wendy Cato.
We were all not surprised. We were surprised, but we all knew that this was well-deserved. But last week, at the Burke County Chamber of Commerce Women's Leadership Luncheon, City Manager Sally Sandy was awarded the Women's Leadership Trailblazer Award. For decades, City Manager Sally Sandy has worked tirelessly to ensure the success and well-being of our community. She stepped into a role that had never before been held by a woman, proving not only that she belonged there, but that she would redefine what leadership could accomplish. Her expertise in financial stewardship has guided a multimillion-dollar budget, ensuring the city remains stable while continuing to grow. Her commitment to progress has brought new opportunities to residents, whether through economic development, infrastructure improvements, or community initiatives that keep Morgantown moving forward. Even in the face of unpredicted challenges of COVID and a 500-year flood caused by Hurricane Helene, she has led with strength and creativity. When the pandemic threatened to stall progress, she found ways to keep businesses supported, city services running, and community traditions alive. She has always looked beyond obstacles to find solutions, proving time and again that leadership is not just about managing, it's about building, inspiring, and trailblazing a path for others to follow. She has helped to shape communities, drive progress, and inspire those around her to aim higher. Her legacy is one of service, strategy, and an unwavering belief in the potential of this community. We are so proud of you, Sally. Thank you for your leadership, dedication, and commitment to Morgantown.
Thank you.
We have another surprise. Today is Sally's birthday.
Oh, dear God. Oh, God.
Okay, we got to start with.
Happy Birthday, dear Sally. Happy Birthday to you. Y'all won't be. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Sally. Happy Birthday to you. Make a good Lord bless you. May the good Lord bless you. May the good Lord bless you. May the good Lord bless you.
They're all out.
There'll be cake afterwards for a few that are still here.
I'm glad there weren't 61 candles. And thank you, I can't think of a nicer bunch to spend my birthday with. And thank you for all the clapping and all of that. The recognition was very surprising. I was extremely shocked. I am rarely called off guard, but I was very called off guard. And there is not a day that I come to this place that I don't know that it is because of people in this room and in this community and the employees is why I was recognized for that. So, thank you. That's all I can say.
Okay, next on our agenda is the American Legion Department Oratorical Award. I'm going to ask Councilman Butch McSwain if he'll approach the microphone and make some comments. And ask Malik Harris to come forward, please.
Malik, I'm going to digress a minute.
He's been here several times.
Not bother this, but I'd like to tell everybody and make sure that people at home, as well as in here, understand COVID about did away with our American Legion posts. We really were struggling. The ages that we were, I was one of the younger ones, believe it or not. And we struggled. And the leadership of our two posts are here today, and they have done a dynamite job of getting it back. And a situation like what we have right here gives both of them something to be working toward, which is great for our community. So, I want to praise these guys for the return of American Legion to us. We are more than baseball, but we're looking forward to baseball. The American Legion Oratorical Contest exists, I want to make sure everybody understands this, to develop deeper knowledge and appreciation of the U.S. Constitution among high school students. It's been in existence since 1938, which is pretty impressive. Over the years, they have given out over $200,000 in scholarship money on all the different levels there are. Malik, help me with the levels. First, we had the local, which was our posts here. Then there was district, which was this area. And then there was division, which is the western part of North Carolina, not all of it. And then, as American Legion does, instead of saying state championship, it's department championship, okay, which Malik won, okay? He had five. Five-plus years.
No, five included.
Okay, there were five contestants, including Malik. And some of the more involved members have spoken very highly of Malik's chances. He goes to the national in Michigan in May. And, you know, we look forward to having you back in June to hear all about it. If you'd like to say a few words, I would turn it over to you.
So, I'll start with saying good evening and happy birthday, Sally. Good evening, Mayor Thompson, members of the City Council, and everyone gathered here tonight. I'm going to start by saying how truly honored I am to be here and to say thank you for taking the time to recognize my win at the North Carolina State Department of American Legion Oratorical Contest. I wouldn't be here without the support, encouragement, and belief of so many people in this room and beyond this room. This achievement isn't mine alone. It belongs to every teacher who challenged me, every mentor who guided me, and every leader who made space for me to serve. It would be incredibly selfish for me not to mention by name those who made it possible for me to get here. First and foremost, I give a glory and honor to God. And then, the American Legion Post 322 Commander Jackie Thomas and historian Pam Jeanette, District 21 Commander Mike Hassan, my incredible coaches, Ms. Kelsey Savramuthu and Ms. Laura McGlamery, and most importantly, my grandparents, Gregory and Ethel Lynn Harris. Winning this contest also comes with the possibility of a $25,000 scholarship, and I plan to bring every dollar back here with pride. I'll be carrying the name of Morgantown. I'll be carrying Burke County and our great state with me to the national level. And I promise to represent our community with excellence, dignity, and the heart that it deserves. But beyond any prize and any recognition, my greatest hope is that in this journey, become something more, an inspiration. I want the youth of Burke County to see themselves in this story, to know that their voices matter and that their ideas are powerful, and that they don't have to wait until they're older to make a difference. Throughout the past few years, I've been privileged to be a part of conversations and decisions that most young people never get the opportunity to be involved in. And every time I sat at a table, whether as a student or as a civic servant, I carried with me the deep belief that youth have a voice that is worth hearing. We aren't just the future, we are the present, and we are ready to lead now. My mission is to help clear a path forward for more young people to get involved, to feel empowered and to join the conversation, to show up for their community, and to take every opportunity to grow into the leaders that they are capable of being. Because I've seen firsthand what's possible when a community chooses to believe in its youth, and now I want to help lead in that belief. My mission remains rooted in the same passion that guided me all along, which is to continue paving a path forward for the young people in this community to show that they too have a place in shaping Morgantown. To take every, that they too have a place to shape Morgantown, to show them and feel empowered to step up, to speak out, and to take every opportunity available for them to learn, grow, and lead. Because when we invest in the next generation of leaders and when we believe in them earnestly, we are not just preparing them for tomorrow, we are preparing them for today. We're building a stronger Morgantown, a stronger North Carolina, a stronger country, but we are also building a stronger world when we invest in young people. And that's what the heart of my speech, it's about the Constitution, it's about citizenship, but at the heart of my speech is about each and every one of us, regardless of age, stepping up to defend the ideals of our Constitution. And so, I just want to thank you again for this incredible honor, and I am proud to represent our community and even prouder to keep working towards a future where every young person in our nation knows that they belong at the table. Thank you.
I think I can speak for everyone here that we are proud to have you representing us. You have just demonstrated why you are where you are. And good luck, and we'll all be praying for you.
I appreciate that.
Good luck.
Next on our agenda is Officer of the Year Award, the Law Enforcement Assistance Foundation 2024 Award. I'll call on retired Chief Wisniewicz to come forward.
I think Ryan, I think, is it going to be Ryan?
Chief Ryan, if he'll come forward.
Somebody come.
Council, Mayor, Sally. So, this year again, Burke County's Law Enforcement Officer of the Year comes from Morgan and Department of Public Safety. And several years ago, one of my responsibilities at the department was to look over an applicant's background file. And typically, it takes about a half hour to look over a file and give a thumbs up or thumbs down to whether we're going to offer a final offer. And one day, I was given a file that was two to three inches thick, and it took me what should have been a half hour, multiple hours, to go through this. And the gentleman that is standing behind me is a very highly decorated serviceman, and when he came to us and has been nothing but an asset to this department and to the city since he's been hired and served this community. And it would be an injustice if I didn't read the synopsis that Amy put together that was read at the leaf banquet. So, you'll bear with me for a few minutes. I'd like to read that for you all. PSO Mike Ziegler grew up in Missouri and joined the U.S. Air Force after graduating from high school. He spent his entire military career as a pararescue man and was extensively trained in weapons and tactics, battlefield trauma, and emergency medicine, survival, mountaineering, and SCUBA. He did combat search and rescue missions in Iraq, Afghanistan, Kuwait, Asia, Iceland, Spain, France, and Africa. During his military career, he received 24 military commendations, including the Bronze Star Medal and three air medals for lifesaving missions. He was involved with missions that culminated in the saving of hundreds of lives. Of his United States Air Force career, his superiors had the following to say. Michael possesses many exceptional skills, but his ability to build collaborative teams and an influence beyond the unit have proven to be his finest. Being the true leader he was, he deployed to a hostile environment with a 50-man team with only months left before his retirement. From the highest to the lowest ranking individual, if you needed help, Michael provided unwavering support. Chief Master Sergeant Michael Ziegler retired from the United States Air Force after honorably serving our country for 33 years and began his second career as a sworn officer with Morgantown Public Safety. During his time with our department, he has filled many roles, and his fellow officers have seen the skills, leadership, and unwavering support that his military supervisor spoke of. Not only is he a professional, dependable law enforcement officer, he also has taken on roles within our department. PSO Ziegler is a founding member of the Foothills Regional Law Enforcement Crisis Incident Stress Management Team. This team provides critical incident stress management solutions to fellow emergency service personnel who have been exposed to traumatic incidents on and off duty. Drawing from his vast background of experience, PSO Ziegler helps his brothers and sisters utilize and develop healthy coping skills to navigate the rigors of the profession. PSO Ziegler is an active field training officer who teaches new officers the skills to not only perform their job, but also life lessons to keep them safe along the way. PSO Ziegler is a rarity among field training officers as his knowledge and experience have in many ways allowed him to instill lessons that go far beyond a classroom setting. PSO Ziegler serves as an informal leader within his patrol unit. He's approachable and knowledgeable, and his fellow officers often reach out to him for guidance and support. He went three-for-three on foot chases within a year and apprehended all three suspects. He recently researched and proposed a purchase of individual first aid kits for our agency. He oversaw the issuance and training for the application of these kits, and in 2024, his fellow LEOs voted him Officer of the Year for our agency. PSO Ziegler currently serves as the team leader for our SWAT team. He is involved with conducting briefings prior to any SWAT operation as well as debriefing after deployments. He oversees monthly team training and documentation, also researches and proposes upgrades or purchases for any equipment that the team may need. On August 7, if you'll remember, PSO Ziegler received the Meritorious Service Medal during a motor vehicle accident call. PSO Ziegler recognized a life-threatening injury and utilized a tourniquet to control the victim's bleeding. When City Council presented him with their award, he stated that the daily success of his job was not due to him individually, but due to the combined team effort of his entire platoon. So, it should go without saying, but I'm going to say it anyways, we are extremely fortunate to have him as part of our team in serving this community. I present to you PSO Officer Ziegler.
That was a lot of nice words. It just means I got some potential. My extensive career here of going on almost five years, I've been surrounded by great people. They're standing in the back there. They told the line, excuse me, they told the line every single day. So, I accept, thank you, City, for the recognition. It's an honor, but I'm going to accept it with the backing of my fellow officers who were with me every step of the way, too. And Ms. Sandy, happy 30th birthday.
Thank you. Thank you.
But I've had a pleasure working here. I've always said, if you leave one position, you've got to have a purpose to get up in the morning, and mine was to do this. I need to slow down a little bit. But thank you very much.
Michael, thank you for all you do.
And I appreciate my team in the back. And I appreciate my team in the back.
I think we should all stand up.
Hurricane Helene left thousands of people in western North Carolina in the dark, but a light continued to shine. Public Power Utilities sent mutual aid, including line workers, trucks, supplies, and equipment to help restore power. More than a dozen public power communities requested support, and public power neighbors across the region answered the call. Join us in our heartfelt thanks to the public power utility workers who brought hope and light back to western North Carolina.
We have a proclamation that I'd like to read concerning North Carolina Line Worker Appreciation Day, which will be April 14th. Whereas April 14th, 2015, the North Carolina General Assembly ratified House Bill 140, which designate the second Monday in April of each year as Lineman Appreciation Day in North Carolina, and whereas the City Council of Morganton celebrates the profession of electric line workers and wishes to honor the electric department personnel for their exemplary service to the city of Morganton and its citizens, and whereas electric utilities employ a special class of employees, electric line workers responsible for building and maintaining the distribution lines that bring electricity to homes and businesses, constantly devoting themselves to their duty, and whereas this profession demands passion, dedication, and ongoing training, and require line workers to maintain the lines around the clock, ensuring they can provide safe, reliable energy to the community, and whereas line workers are often first responders during storms, working to repair broken and damaged electric lines under hazardous conditions to make the area safe for other public safety heroes, and whereas the line workers play a vital role in the lives of our citizens by maintaining and growing our electrical infrastructure, putting their lives on the line every day by working with the many dangers of high voltage, and whereas the line workers of Morganton's Electric Utility and their example of service above self are deserving of the respect, admiration, and appreciation of all the citizens of Morganton, now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Morganton, North Carolina, joins with all North Carolina public power communities in their celebrations of Line Worker Appreciation Day on April 14th, 2025. Proclaim this day, April 7th, day of April 2025, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy.
Happy birthday.
Manager. I think you're still the manager.
I am.
I'll call Brooks. Is Brooks in the audience? Brooks, if you'd like to come forward.
And Bart.
And Bart.
Bart.
And call Mayor Pro Tim Cato, she will make a presentation.
It's not framed like the others, but you can get it framed, I'm sure you can. This year especially, I cannot say how grateful this community, our City Council, is of the job you did during Helene. It was just amazing. I mean, I always brag on the electric department because we're always on before Duke is whenever there's a storm or something, you know? Or they'll call and say, "Do you have electricity?" And I'd say, "No, but it's probably a squirrel." You know, so, you know, we always have a good reason if we're down. But the hours, the 16 hours, the constant work that our linemen did this year is, this is a small thank you to what you all did, you know, but personally makes me cry. Now it gets to your turn to talk.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bart.
Let's have a few comments, if you'll permit me.
It's an honor to receive this proclamation, recognition of the electrical lineman with the city of Morganton. Just under six months ago, every person here experienced in devastating detail the effects of three days of rain followed by five hours of 50 to 70 mile an hour winds. Nearly every street had been blocked by trees and tree limbs. By mid-morning that fateful Friday, all 22 circuits were off, all five substations were down, every school, every home, every business, and our nearly 9,000 customers were without power. Essential services were down, no restaurants could operate, only one or two gas stations had generators, and then the next day the floods came. Into this maelstrom came the public safety crews, the firemen, the street workers, the water people, the compass people, and many of the city workers as could. All across the various city departments, the employees that came made their way into a darkened city. Calls for outside help to other cities were made. Morganton officials, elected officials, employees, and the people of this city came together to rebuild the process of rebuilding. But before the response even began, your city linemen were here. Before the winds had stopped, your city linemen were cutting trees and fixing poles. Before the crews from other cities could arrive, your linemen were already here. Before the rains moved out and the winds died down, your linemen were working. We owe many thanks to many people and to the linemen from other cities, but from my perspective, the difference between them and our crews here is this: Your linemen left their families in the dark to restore power to other families here. Your linemen left their loved ones with blocked driveways and damaged homes to return power to strangers. Your linemen left their wives and children with relatives, not seeing them for days sometimes, in order to reestablish normalcy to this city. I've been doing this for nearly 40 years, and I started at Hugo in '89, and I've worked storms, thunderstorms, windstorms, ice storms, snowstorms, tornadoes, hurricanes, drunk drivers, and suicide squirrels. But I've never, with all these outages, I've never seen so few work so hard for so many. So I'm honored, very honored, to accept this proclamation of appreciation for the electrical lineman of Morganton. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooks. Next, our upcoming events, April is Poetry Month. I'd like to call Sharon Jablonsky, if she'll approach the mic.
I tell you what, we need all this good news, and what an evening of it, just we'll say. I just want to say that the Morganton Cultural Arts Commission, we've been in effect, I think about two and a half years now, and we are committed to developing new strategies that recognize and support Morganton's vibrant creative community of artists, art stakeholders, and stewards. And to that end, we have added the sculptures that are up today, and hopefully in February of next year, we'll have a new round. And by the way, the rabbits are free, just letting you know, you can go do the rabbits now, they're free. We also do music on the porch in August. And then the other new thing that we have added is April is National Poetry Month. And to that end, we have posters throughout downtown and in the city. We have poems on coffee sleeves that are at Grand Cafes, Thornwell Books, Little Guatemala, and Water Bean Coffee. So when you get your cup of coffee from there, they will have a sleeve on it, they'll put a sleeve on it, and they will have a cute little poem. Blackout poetry, which is way beyond my skill set, but is done at various bars, also this year at Thornwell Books, Astro Rose, Fontiflora, and Reptile Cantina. And then this week, we are hosting, or actually Burke Arts Council, we work with them, is hosting Philip Shabazz, which is a North Carolina poet, and he is in the school systems this week, and then this Friday at 4 o'clock, he will do a poetry slam on the Courthouse Square. And finally, we put back the big words magnets back on the doors on the Courthouse Square so that people can make their own poems, and I went by there the other day because after I put them up, I evidently looked at my sunglasses. Anyway, you can tell that people, there's all kinds of poems written. It is so cool to see it. So that was our goal, we like interaction, we want to see arts in the community, people are so creative. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your job well done. Okay, in downtown and City Hall, we have Art in the City Hall, April and May, Scott Durgans, sketching and painting abstract art. Scott is a graduate of Kendall College of Art and Design and worked as a professional furniture designer in Morganton, North Carolina. Our pop-up spring farmer's market will be Saturday, April 12th, from 9 to 1 at 111 North Green Street. And at Kama, our Performing Arts Center is uptown, a celebration of Motown and soul on Wednesday, April 16th, that starts at 7:30. Under Parks and Recreation, our annual Easter egg hunt will be on Saturday, April 12th, at Freedom Park. The games begin at 10 a.m., the egg hunt begins at 11:00, and baseball and softball opening week is April 7th through the 10th. First pitch will be at 6 p.m. at Shoei Park each night. Next on our agenda is the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency. Sally, any updates?
The only update is the rate committee continues to meet so that we can get budget numbers.
Okay, we have a consent agenda of several items. Sally, if you'll cover those.
We do. So the consent agenda includes nine items tonight, and we would ask that you consider adopting those in one motion, unless someone has an item they'd like to remove to discuss separately. And for those of you viewing at home, that includes minutes from our meeting on March 3rd, both the regular meeting and the closed session. It includes approval and renewal and update of an MOU between Morganton Public Safety and North Carolina School for the Death for a School Resource Officer. It includes an agreement to participate from 2025 to 2027 with Western Piedmont Cog in our stormwater partnership, an approval of a dark fiber lease agreement between Compass and Foothills Broadband. It includes a budget amendment to accept grant funds from Eletra Cities in the amount of $5,000 for downtown. It includes a budget amendment to transfer funds from the sidewalk escrow account in the amount of $20,000, and that is for the improvements at Highway 70 and Independence around the sheets, and all the pedestrian improvements and things at that intersection. Approval of the April 2025 Art Crawl event, which is going to be on Thursday, April 17th, from 3:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. in downtown. And then approval of a contract for audit services, and that is with Thompson Price, Scott Adams, and Company. That is for fiscal year 2526. And that is, actually, isn't that 2425? Yeah, that's 2425, the year we're currently in, and that is $42,500. And then approval of a sidewalk maintenance agreement with North Carolina DOT for the city to maintain sidewalks that they're going to be putting in on Burke Mount Avenue.
Do any members of council wish to have any item removed? What is the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Next on our agenda is a public hearing and consideration of a contiguous annexation petition submitted by Madcap Adventures for three adjoining parcels, land described and located at 522 Enola Road, 757 Pete Britton Road, and Zero Enola Road.
Yeah, and I think Keith is going to give the description.
Okay. We're going to open up the public hearing, ask our legal counsel to give us some history or description.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ronnie. So, council will recall that at our last meeting in March, we discussed the sufficiency of the petition that was received that was certified by our clerk as being sufficient, and also set this date for the public hearing. So we're here today for the public hearing with regard to the petition. This is a petition for voluntary annexation that was received earlier this year from Madcap Adventures through their member manager, Scott McClure. And as you've heard from Mayor, it involves three adjoining tracts of land at the intersection of Pete Britton Road and Enola Road. The petition for voluntary annexation, again, has been certified as sufficient. We're here today to consider the public hearing, also advise council that the petition does meet the requirements for voluntary annexation. Proper notice was given in the newspaper. The property under consideration for annexation is described in the proposed ordinance by meets and bounds description, and also there is a map of the proposed annexed area also attached to the proposed ordinance.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor or against this petition? One question, this is going to be serviced by Salem Fire Department, correct?
Yes.
Yes, well, we'll switch that, and then we'll reimburse Salem.
Okay.
They are currently served by Salem.
Salem, okay. Any questions for or against? If not, the public hearing is closed. What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve the voluntary annexation petition and request submitted by Madcap Adventures LLC to annex three adjoining parcels of land located at 522 Enola Road, 757 Pete Britton Road, and Zero Enola Road into the corporate limits of the city of Morganton.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is a public hearing and consideration of a zoning map amendment for a portion of 757 Pete Britton Road and Zero Enola Road. I'll open up the public hearing, ask Wendy to please give us some details.
All right, bear with me while I get logged on to the computer here. It's gone to sleep with all the good news we've had tonight. All right. So this is the same property that we just talked about annexing, and Chad, if you can go to the maps. It's the corner of Pete Britton and Enola Road, across the street from Liberty Middle School. The portion in the white is a portion that's not in the city, well, wasn't in the city limits till a few minutes ago of those. So it had a Burke County zone, it was R1 zoning under Burke County. Now that it's coming into the city limits, we're asking you to apply a zone through a zoning map amendment so it doesn't sit there unzoned. You can see the surrounding property is Zone MID. So the proposal is to make that remaining property MID as well, which would allow a range of medium intensity uses, lower density residential uses, and neighborhood scale residential uses, again, consistent with the zoning. Around it, one more map, Chad, the Future Land Use Map in the city's Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan, again, shows all of that area in there becoming that mixed density residential neighborhood, and that MID zone would fit into that category of that zoning, so.
Thank you for that explanation. Anyone wish to speak for or against this?
Yes.
Okay, seeing no one approach, I'll close the public hearing. And what's the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment for Zero Enola Road, parcel identification number 2702637232, and 757 Pete Britton Road, parcel identification number 2702628901, from Burke County Residential R1 District, a medium intensity district with corridor overlay, airport heliport, safety overlay, and watershed protection overlay, which is consistent with the adopted Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan and is considered suitable.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Butch. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, we have another public hearing and consideration of a rezoning request submitted by Eric and Christie Carswell to rezone a parcel located at 810 West Fleming Drive. Public hearing is now open, I'll ask Wendy for some history.
All right. So this property, as the mayor said, is 810 West Fleming Drive, so give you some locations. This is McDonald's, and this is Mimosa Hills Shopping Center. Over here, you have Walmart. This is O'Reilly's, and this is the small property across the street from that, that has at various times been a bank with a drive-through. It's a very small building, and then there was an oncoming with a drive-through. So a bank, hot dog stand, hot shots, coffee, and it has been vacant for quite some time. So the property is currently in Zone MID, this is some of the surrounding area, the area across the street, and on most all of our major corridors is Zone HID for the higher intensity district along the corridors that can handle the most traffic and have the most visibility there. So the proposed rezoning is to rezone that from MID to be HID, consistent with some of the other uses in that area. The Future Land Use Map shows those parcels becoming HID, or, sorry- The future land use map shows those parcels becoming HID, or sorry, it shows them becoming mixed use, which the HID category would transition into, which is the largest mix of commercial and residential uses of all types in there. So the proposal is considered consistent with the future land use map, from which we had, you guys will remember, a couple of years of consultation on that with a lot of options for public input in there. The bigger difference is that in some of the categories, while it does allow changes in height and setbacks, it allows some uses like outdoor retail sales and larger retail shops, which were not permitted in the MID use, which is why I understand why the applicants are interested in the parcel, but again, consistent with most of the zoning in that jurisdiction there along the major corridor. One more map, 18,000 vehicles a day along that corridor. To give you a comparison, this is the same configuration that is outside Western Piedmont Community College and Chick-fil-A, where we currently have 25,000 cars a day, and the capacity for both of those has not yet reached in those areas. So we believe that any type of development in that should be able to be accommodated for in those numbers.
Thank you, Wendy. It is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak for or against this? Yes, if you come forward, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Tim Guffey. I live at 825 West Union Street. I am the occupant of the historic property, Creekside Plantation House. My third great-grandfather built the house. My family has occupied the house for six generations. I'm currently the caretaker for the property. I spend a lot of my time taking care of the, you know, the gardens and the house itself. Creekside is pretty significant to Burke County. It's one of the most historic sites in all of Burke County. So we house many documents, historic paintings. We have what we call the oldest bathtub in Burke County. It's like, we believe it is. There are six parcels of land, actually, sorry, it's five parcels of land that connect to the Carswells property. They're all residences, and we all have pretty quiet neighborhoods or pretty quiet backyards. You know, I grew up playing in this backyard when I was a kid. We have a property line that's about 160 feet that joins the Carswells property line. Sorry, I'm not the best speaker here. Creekside is kind of like an island peninsula in the middle of all these business districts, the high intensity districts. We've got Fox Construction across the road that just burnt down. I sat there and watched it burn until the early hours of the morning. It's in a high intensity district, and I don't want something like that coming into my backyard or like, they may not be proposing to put a business like that there, but in the future, if they decide to sell it, what kind of business could come into the property and propose a threat to Creekside? I know all of my family has sent letters stating that they're opposed to it becoming a high intensity district. You know, I don't think anybody's opposed to a nursery or something like that going there, but it's just what it opens it up to in the future if another business decides to come in. I guess that's about the gist of everything I have to say. You know, I just, I would like to keep the character of our neighborhoods the same as it has been for, you know, how many ever years it's been since they've changed it to a medium intensity district. And I know that medium intensity districts try to take in consideration the character of the neighborhood and that type of thing. So I think changing it to a high intensity would change that. You know, Creekside, we try to give as many tours of the house to people as we can. We've in the past done the tour of homes, and I plan on making it a place where we can do that again. It's under a lot of sustainment right now, but I would just, I'd like to keep it more for the community, you know? It's a property that everybody loves and wants to come and see, and I think it would damage that character of the house. So thank you very much for your time, and appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, public hearing is now closed. What's the wish of council? Any questions for Wendy? Wendy, what was the, what was the count, 18,000?
18,000 vehicles a day on that section of West Fleming Drive.
In the discussion with P and Z, did they talk about the historic nature of the adjoining property?
It was mentioned that there was a property that was there. I believe P and Z felt that because we had been through such an extensive process with the comprehensive plan, and that there were no comments raised about the possibility of that zoning changing throughout that 18-month time period, that it was consistent with what their wishes and the community's wishes had been at that point, to be able to rezone that to the HID time period in accordance with the future land use map. Chad, if you want to put that one back up.
P and Z said everything that, I assume got approved by P and Z.
It did. It was unanimously approved by P and Z.
So I think we have MID and HID zones in our, in our book.
You do. It shows the comparison of what can be in each one.
I will mention that if there is any residential use beside a non-resident, sorry, let me invert that. If any non-residential use comes in besides a residential use, they are required to put buffering between the two with either landscaping or landscaping and fencing for that visual and physical separation there.
So any business coming in would be required?
Any business coming in would be required to do that. Any use whatsoever that was not another residential use. In fact, if it was a multifamily residential, it would still be required to do that adjacent to any of the single-family residences.
Wendy, looking back at that map again. Craig, could you put that map back up?
Um, Chad.
The color map.
The comprehensive plan.
Where's this house located?
So the house is, and probably, it's right here. Actually, let me go to, can we go on to the, this map? And then I'll zoom in, and you'll be able to see.
It's right behind.
So this is the property, and this is the house. I believe the house faces West Fleming Drive and is accessed from that.
West Union.
West Union. Sorry, West Union. They're both west. There's no access from the Creekside property to West Fleming, is that correct?
There is access from West Fleming. There's a light down where you can drive in. It used to be. Drive in, it's grown up now.
Okay, so an unutilized driveway there. Understand there's been difficulty in finding tenants for the property under the MID zoning, and it was expressed to us that the tenant, or the owner's intention was to occupy it themselves, thus perhaps addressing some of the undesirable uses that go on when the property is vacant. But as the other speaker noted, it does allow all of those uses in that zone with whatever their customary restrictions are for setbacks and densities and any other special requirements if it's any of the list of particular uses in there.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve the rezoning of 810 West Fleming Drive. Property identification number 1793626900 from medium intensity district with corridor overlay and watershed protection overlay to high intensity district with corridor overlay and watershed protection overlay, which is consistent with the adopted Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan and is considered suitable.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. More discussion?
Just one more question, Wendy, on something I think you said. You said if there's any non-residential, there is a required buffering there. What kind of examples did you give of the buffering that?
So I can actually bring those up from in the zoning ordinance so that we are all aware of what those are. If, Chad, you can go to my laptop. So a buffer yard requirement, they shall function as opaque visual screens, minimum height of six feet, intended to separate higher intensity and lower intensity uses, and the buffer yards for non-residential development adjacent to any residential. This is the corridor overlay. Just want to double-check one of my maps here. So you can see the corridor overlay goes, it will actually go a bit further back on this property, so for all intents and purposes, it's just this back sliver of the property because this 20 feet in the road goes on to the back of that. And it is there for a 20-foot width with a certain amount of small trees, large trees, large shrubs, and medium or small shrubs that are required to be there. If they do put in that fence, again, to that opaque screen, then it allows a reduction in the shrubs and the buffer width by 25%, so it would be down to 15 feet if they chose to do the fencing with it. And technically, the landscaping is supposed to be on the neighbor's side of the fence, and then the fence is on your property. So you're looking at 15 feet of landscaping and then a fence around it.
Thank you.
That was a minimum six feet high.
Yes, a minimum. It's supposed to form, buffer yards shall function as an opaque visual screen with a minimum height of six feet, and that height is supposed to be achieved by the plantings within one year of installation.
Next question, within one year.
I think it's important that we protect the historic nature of that property, but at the same time, we have spent a lot of energy, a lot of people's input in everything for our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and because we have the overlay and because we have some strict bordering in place, I think that it will protect the historic property, probably and maybe even better than it is now as a vacant property, so.
Yeah, I was hoping we can accomplish both with the buffering. Yeah, and we're discussing the historical property, but this is the, all the way the other sides too, the other residences.
Yes, any residential property side.
Any further discussion, questions?
Tough one.
Have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Wendy. Next is public hearing and consideration of the City of Ordnance, City of Morganton zoning ordinance text amendments. Wendy?
All right. So these are a variety of minor amendments that are intended to modify or clarify some of the current requirements. All proposals support the vision of the Imagine Morganton 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Changes include clarifying lot sizes, sidewalk measurements, sign height clearances, correcting an error in the height limit table, and editing the length of time for and defining appropriate use of recreational vehicles as dwelling units after an emergency event. The proposed amendments were presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on March 13th, and with clarify, and they spent some time clarifying and making some proposals to the requirements around the emergency use of recreational vehicles for housing, and those, all of the changes, including those amendments, received unanimous support. I can bring up any particular one, if there's something you'd like to talk about or if you have any questions, but.
I'd like to talk about sidewalks. I know, I noticed that the sidewalk shall be permitted to, in a landscape area, certain requirements, and again, not permitted in a landscape area. Could you cover that, please?
Yes, so I have a drawing here, which is tinier on my screen now than it did in my office. There we go. So what the, the rule says is that sidewalks are allowed to cross the required landscaping area, but they shouldn't be a major part of the landscaping area, and we get this question a lot. So this kind of explains it. If you have a required five feet of landscaping and a required five feet of sidewalk, your sidewalk can't take up the entire five feet of your landscaping. So this sidewalk that's parallel to the street can't be part of that street yard. You need to go on either side of that and create the street yard. However, we do have ADA requirements that require you to make a connection from the sidewalk to your business, and therefore, that five feet that kind of perpendicularly crosses is required, or is allowed to be in there. So we wanted to try to specify that, and I believe there was one or two wordsmithed words in there from the commission, and they said that the sidewalk shall be permitted to cross the retired, required landscaping area at an approximately perpendicular angle, and that the sidewalk shall not be permitted to be laid parallel to the street within the required landscaping area.
Thank you. Other questions? What is the wish of council?
I will make a motion to accept amendments for edits to modify or clarify requirements and address typographical errors as recorded in Appendix A. This action is consistent with the approved land use plan as it provides clarity on requirements and corrects errors in the current zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Butch. Any further discussion?
Just one more question, and this is just so, so that I know, on the picture that you have there, what's wrong with the sidewalk that runs parallel? Why?
Because if it, there's nothing wrong with the sidewalk being there. It just can't be counted as part of that required landscaping area.
Okay.
So you'd have to have your five feet of sidewalk and then your five or 10 feet of landscaping. You couldn't take up all five feet of your landscaped area with your sidewalk because that's not landscaping.
Okay.
Yep.
Got a motion and a second?
We'll have Michael do a better drawing than this.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, other business. We need to consider an award of contract to Wildlife Engineering for some storm repair at Bethel Park. Call on Rob Winkler, our special operations person. Rob, welcome.
Thank you. So I guess as far as the contract with Wildlands. So Wildlands, we brought them in right after the storm, hurricane damage, and they did an assessment of the park and looked at damages, the stream restoration, the silt that was brought in and deposited after the storm. So we would like you to approve a contract for their design and construction observation to get the park, we have to get the park back to pre-storm site based off of our permitting through the state about what our requirements are, and they're going to see through this to make sure this happens, and they have been doing some of it as well.
So our seeded flood plain, which is washed out, it'll have to be reseeded, and all that'll have to be done, correct?
Yeah, a lot of the silt that is brought in and deposited is going to have to be removed, and then fresh areas are going to have to be prepared in the stream banks and such. So some of the silt will be removed, some of it will be reused on-site.
Okay. Other questions?
And you have already approved the contract for that work to happen.
Correct.
This is the engineering oversight and some of the design that had to be done to make sure the contractor was doing it to meet all of our permitting.
What's the wish of council?
I'll enter a motion to award contract to Wildlands Engineering, Inc. for $15,000 for Bethel Park damage and assessment recommendations and construction administration and observation.
Thank you, Butch. You have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? When will they start, Rob? Any idea?
They have started the construction work, and they're almost finished.
Okay.
As far as the contract that you approved for Baker. Yes, and I can tell you.
He was going to give a little, once y'all vote, he's going to give an update on Bethel too, so people can hear that.
All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, yeah, so just to bring council up to speed and citizens listening at home, we have, Baker Grading has almost finished the silt removal and the repair. Hopefully, they're going to be finished up this week, and we will be turning that in on our FEMA work and contract for reimbursement, both engineering and the silt removal. So as soon as that's finished, they, let me go back, they've actually been working on several things hand in hand with this, because we're in such a timeframe window with vegetation and planting. As you know, we were in our construction timeline when we had two storms hit, not just one, two. And a lot of the damage occurred because of the lack of vegetation and plantings and growth in place, which we had construction site bare soil exposed, which washed away a lot of it. So we've got a time window right now, so they are planting their vegetation to get that in and get that before the summer because. Because as I was going to finish down here barring no more storms, we hope to get you a park back that's, that's ready and sustainable. But they're also in the process of shoring up the half-mile loop that's going to be paved, the walking trail. The abutments will be worked in and poured real soon. So our bridges that are on site can be situated and put in place. Brian's not here tonight, so I do know that he's working. He's got contractors on site right now that's finished grading for the footsaw court and the pickleball courts. They will be paving within probably the next month to get those finished up. And he's also working with playground companies and shelter design to get those in place. We are currently running about two months behind on this project.
Not bad.
No, it's not really for having two storms. And the contractor's done a great job actually getting back, getting us back to a timely process. We still feel good about this fall being completed. So with the exceptions of the restrooms. I think that's going to be a lengthier process because of the relocating those down. But we have asked for extensions with the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant to allow those extensions for the timeline. And but I think we're, we're ahead of the process. And considering all and the damages that we had, still going to be a great place. It's going to be a great park and.
And we met with the Rec Foundation Board of Directors this past week and talked to them about the continued work here and the requirements for the amenities in the park. And they have agreed to fund $250,000 for us toward the bathrooms and all of the things, given the current situation and where we are.
Yeah.
Awesome.
So still very excited about the park and the process. And it's, it's going to be, just like all other parks, it's going to be as good as anything around.
Rob, thanks for all you do and that whole group.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is consideration of a contract for the repair of the Beanstalk Playground and the wagon wheel located at Catawba Meadows Park. Sally?
So you know, we have talked about those items and the damage that they sustained in the winds and the water from Hurricane Helene. And that we were getting quotes to have that restored. And we have received those. And that is, again, from Beanstalk Builders, who custom designed that and built that for us and who has continued to work with us on the maintenance and taking care of that. Their quote to repair the playground and the wagon wheel is $153,000. And staff is asking for a 5% contingency, which is $7,650, that we will control and have any change orders if we need to use any of that. Asking that you approve that so that we wouldn't have to come back to you if we find something in the process, so we can keep this going. We are working with FEMA and our insurance company on trying to get all of this cost reimbursed from one or both of those sources. That continues in the process. We believe that once we approve this contract, that they will start work like in the next several weeks and plan to see this restored, let's call it April, May-ish. And our goal ultimately, if we can get this done, the area around the picnic shelters and the playground before the rest of the park is done, a way to get that open.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve a contract with Beanstalk Builders LLC for the repair of the Beanstalk Everyone's Playground and the wagon wheel located at Catawba Meadows Park in an amount not to exceed $160,650, which includes a 5% contingency of $7,650.
Thank you, Wendy. Have a motion and have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have consideration for budget amendments to appropriate funds for storm-related expenses. Sally?
Yes, so this is our every month routine now. And there's good news and not so good news here. So a couple of things. So we are asking that you allow us to transfer $200,000 from the electric fund into the Helene fund as we continue to replace equipment transformers and things like that that have high dollars in order to have enough spending authority in the hurricane fund to do that. The second piece, and this is good news, we have received insurance reimbursements from our flood insurance. Remember, we have property and liability, and we have separate flood insurance on some of our facilities. And to date, we have received from the flood folks $538,465. And that's great. And we actually have the checks. Like when I say we've received it, we have checks. And asking that you accept that money and put that into the Helene Storm Fund. So obviously, we're spending money. That relates to Shuey and Catawba Meadows, two facilities and things at Shuey and Catawba Meadows. And so we'd ask for those two things. But I also would like to say, and this is the first time I've been able to utter these words since we started this. So we're working through the FEMA process and the grant process, which is tedious at best. And we have submitted some of the expenditures that we made in the height of the storm. One of those is the expenditures for all of the cities that sent linemen and trucks and equipment for us. And FEMA has approved that. That has gone to State Emergency Management, and they have approved that. And we are in line to receive that payment back. That is $844,274. That is what we paid to those cities for the help that they provided to us. And then in the same situation, you'll recall, we removed, we hired a contractor to remove silt from the greenway, from the paved trail, and then some at the sewer plant. That one is also approved through the state, and we are waiting a check to reimburse that cost. And that is $116,311. So the insurance money and now this money, all reimbursing costs that we have already incurred. But awfully nice to know that we got some and the rest is on the way.
Almost one and a half million dollars, isn't it?
It is. It is. So that's one and a half million dollars, you know, almost, standing up against the 46 million that we need.
It's a story.
But it is something, and we will take it.
Okay, there's two motions. What's the first motion?
I usually like the second one, but I'll go ahead and do the first one. I'd like a motion to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $200,000 to appropriate, to appropriate retained earnings from the electric fund to fund the Helene Project Fund.
Thank you, Butch. Have a motion and have a second. Wendy, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a second motion.
I rarely get to do these. So I'll do a motion to approve a budget amendment to receive insurance reimbursements in the amount of $538,465 and to increase the project fund for Helene storm-related expenses in the amount of $538,465.
Thank you, Chris. Have a motion and have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have consideration of amendment to the 2024 CBBG ordinance. Sally?
Yes, so back in June, actually, back, that should be '24. On June 3rd, 2024, as required by CBBG, we adopted a project budget ordinance, which basically is the project budget for that. And that was in the amount of $508,857. Since that time, and that sets up the categories that we are going to try to fund, whether it's infrastructure, small business loans, some of our slum and blight clearing, those kinds of things. Since the storm, since last year, since that time, different needs have arisen. And so we are asking permission to transfer $60,000 from public infrastructure to small business loans. That will help us to be able to close the loan that we have approved already for Town Tavern, helping them to get back open and get their restaurant back together again. We'll tell you currently, because of timing and where we are, we don't have any current infrastructure projects that this money can be used for because of the federal restrictions. We're doing some work to try to identify some of that in the future, but can't. So this is a way to help us get the business open, use the money, and to get that economy back going and get jobs back over there.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve the budget amendment, amending the original 2024 CBBG budget ordinance by transferring funds from public infrastructure to increased funds available for small business loans in the amount of $60,000.
Thank you, Chris. Have a motion and have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And next, we have an amendment for the Silver Creek Lift Station.
We are going to talk about Silver Creek one more time?
It's April.
It is April. So as you know, we had awarded that project in, at the September council meeting, two weeks before the storm hit. And we were going to do some expansion, some repair work, and some upgrade work there. Then the storm hit. So the original design that we had awarded contracts for was raising the electrical service out there, two feet above the 100-year floodplain then. And as the Helene storm proved, that was not enough. So some time ago, you approved additional engineering to look at how we could mitigate future flooding and what we needed to do there with floodproofing. And that work has been done. We have met back with the contractor. And the cost to raise it now above the 500-year floodplain, the new flood level that has been created, And we are asking, and there's some state money involved in this and all these things. So the budget amendment seems strange, but it really is because of the state funding. And we're also asking to use a portion of our 13.7 million that the state had appropriated to us for water and sewer projects to be able to fund this. So the budget amendment we're asking for is $148,933. The change order to the contract is the 414,102.67. That brings the total contract to 6.4, just a little over 6.4 million. We're asking for both of those actions. Can tell you that they are getting mobilized and ready to start work very soon on this, like in the next few weeks. And this too, we are continuing through the FEMA process and hopeful that we can get some of these dollars back, but we don't know.
Okay, what's the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve change order number one to the existing contract with Brushy Mountain Builders for the construction of the Silver Creek Sewer Pump Station Improvements Project. Amount of this change order is $414,102.67, bringing the new total contract amount to $6,409,832.67.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion and have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion?
That's a lot of money, but that's, that pump station's critical. I think that's money well spent.
It is critical.
Okay.
And not operating at total full working capacity right now. So we will be happy to get this project underway.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a second motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $148,933 to increase the Silver Creek Project Fund to receive additional state appropriation for the increased cost in construction for storm mitigation.
Thank you, Butch. I have a motion and have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Under our 30-day notice for vacancies, Human Relations Commission, we have some expiring terms. Carlita Lidle, Gloria Chambers, Tricia Evans-Hunt, and Tiana Sims. Terms expire May the 3rd of 2025. The Human Relations Commission have vacancies, NCSD representative and BCUM representative. We have two additional items, I believe, that are on your desk. Sally, will you take that first one?
Yet. The first one is an item laid before you, and it is continuation of restoration from Helene. That's a common theme for us. So we are asking for approval to purchase six golf carts for Parks and Rec. And those are to replace the ones that were basically ruined in the storm. And I feel like a broken record. We continue to work with FEMA and our insurance on any kind of reimbursement for this. So we're working through that process. Do not know if we'll get that, but we feel pretty good about it. The cost for all six is $89,748.59. And these are being purchased off state contract.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve the purchase of six golf carts from Carolina Golf Carts at a cost of $89,748.59 through a state contract to provide transportation for Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Wendy. Have a motion and have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
An eight-week delivery.
Eight-week delivery. Okay, our last item, I think, is consideration of approval of a contract amending our finance billing system software. I'll call on Jesse, our finance officer.
So I'll try and keep it short. No, so around this time last year, or maybe even longer, we talked about how we've engaged with Tyler, who's our current software host of our financial system. And we're kind of just adding on modules for that, a little bit for HR, and that's still moving forward. And then our big change, right, is our cash management system that we use to collect our utility tax, really any cash payments that come through the city. We've been with Northstar, that is hosted through Electric Cities for 20-plus years. So it's a big change. It's an 18-plus-month-long conversion process that we're getting really close to the end on. And in that process, we, in our implementation, noticed that basically they have two versions of their cashiering module. One is literally called Tyler Cashiering or Cashiering ERP Pro. And the difference is, is one can handle our utility and tax payments, and one cannot. In our original contract with them, we were on the one that could not do all of it. And they thought we were on separate systems. And as a municipality that collects our own taxes, we are a unicorn. So we've had months of, and they actually flew people from other parts of the country, came and had people physically watch our cash intake process to figure out what system would work best for us because we were basically so special. And we've had to do that with Northstar over the years. We have a lot of programs that were written just for us. So we kind of knew this would be, we wouldn't be a one-size-fits-all kind of thing. And so far, this has been our only issue. But fortunately, they had a separate program that is going to be able to handle it. So all the same things as promised before. Our customer platform is going to be very user-friendly. We will have tax bills online. Like our payment platform will all be integrated into it and a much more user-friendly from a residential customer side. All that is the same. It's really just the backend side that we're changing. So this contract is amending our original contract. And the credit we're receiving back is the progress payments we had made towards the other cashiering module, applying it to this, and that's the difference. It doesn't need a budget amendment, just a change of contract. And our possible start of implementation date is still summer of this year. We'll probably run both systems for at least three months or so. That kind of gets us through all of our cycles because we have bimonthly water cycles. Hopefully, all of that is seamless. We'll have in-person training for our customer service representatives in other parts of the city that use our software also. So hopefully, end of calendar year, we'll be fully implemented. And then we'll work through the HR process and kind of get some new technology moving on.
And the realtors would be able to look up tax payments.
It'd be nice.
Okay, comments for Jesse? Ever felt good? What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve a contract amendment with Tyler Technologies and authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute such contract and any other necessary documents.
I have a motion and have a second. Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? Jesse, thanks. This has been months and months of work, I know, for y'all. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else to come to council? Again, happy birthday to Sally. We are adjourned.
Thank you.